Good morning. We'll go ahead and start the Wednesday, January 9th, 2019 city council meeting. This time, we'll have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Father?
Okay.
Your heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day. We appreciate the opportunity to represent our city in the things that are important to the community. We thank you for our many blessings and ask that you help us through this meeting to do the things that are right for our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have the minutes from the November 14th, 2018, meeting that need to be approved.
Need to approve.
Second. Motion by Westbrook, a second by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Kedrick is going to come up and present an award.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I'm proud to be here for you today to discuss an award that our finance department and other staff here at the City of Tyler work hard to obtain. This is a request that City Council consider accepting a certificate of achievement award in excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. This is for our 2016-2017 annual audit report. This is the 32nd consecutive year that we've received this award. And this award is judged by an impartial panel. They judge our CAFER to determine if it has a spirit of full disclosure, if it communicates our true financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the annual report. Now, I don't know much about the motivation part unless you're a numbers person, but it's a pretty intimidating document, but it's very comprehensive of our financial story here at the City of Tyler. The best we can guess, there's about 35,000 cities in the United States, there's about 3,000 counties in the United States, and we know that there were 4,300 awards awarded for the 2016 CAFER. They're still working on doing the evaluations on the 2017 CAFERs. So it's a pretty hard item to get, and it takes a lot of work to achieve this award. And I've got my staff here today. We've got Lauren Justice, Blake Caffey, Jim Yager, Samantha. These individuals, they worked tirelessly to make sure we get this award, and it's definitely a department-wide award.
Can y'all stand up so everybody can see you and we can clap for you? Thank you very much for your efforts.
So having said that, I just recommend that you all accept the award on behalf of the City of Tyler.
Well, absolutely, and thank you all very much for the hard work that y'all put in each and every year. And this year is an easier year since the sales tax is doing so well, but y'all do such a very good job throughout the year, and we appreciate your service very much.
Thank you.
Move to approve A1.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Heather?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This first item is a special use permit renewal request. This item has previously gone before the council for renewal for the Gateway to Hope, a homeless day resource center. This is located in our downtown area. To the north is general commercial, to the south is industrial, to the west is also general commercial, and to the east is industrial. And it's developed with a mixture of a cellular communications tower, single-family home, a bus transportation office, and storage facilities. This was, this use received an annual SUP approval in 2012 and 2015, and then the management of the use has changed, and that changed in 2015, and the use was approved for three years. This is the first renewal request for the current manager, Highway 80 Rescue Mission. An action plan has been incorporated into the special use permit approval. The majority of the items are related to the facility prohibiting criminal activity. Noncompliance with the action plan can be a reason to revoke the SUP at any time. The applicant has identified actions that it will employ to deter improper actions from its clientele up to and including suspension of services. And you can see here, this is a listing of the action plan requirements. The code enforcement department has not identified any cases in the past three years which have been tied to Gateway to Hope. The police department has also run a report of responses made in this area since 2013, and most common reasons reported were suspicious persons and disturbance. If there are any questions about the data, there has been a representative of the police department here. However, the amount of calls were very minimal in this area and pretty much consistent with other low criminal activity and suspicious persons in other neighborhoods. The staff also contacted Highway 80 to get figures about their operations, and the data shows success from the program. It also identifies that some clients have received revocation of services, and that indicates that Highway 80 has been enforcing the provisions that were approved in the action plan, and their successes are listed here, which are great. You see that clients that have received services, 123 are now employed, 75 have homes. So they're doing wonderful work for the community. There was a protester that said their main concern was approving the use for an indefinite period of time, which was the original request. However, the staff did change that, modify that duration to another five-year renewal, and the protester was satisfied with that renewal. And of the 16 notices, one was returned in opposition at just over a 3.5% protest, and the planning and zoning commission approves this special use permit renewal along with the action plan for five years unanimously.
Okay, we do have a card. It's from Eric Berger, but he is here for questions only. Go ahead.
Sure. I have been involved with Gateway to Hope since 2012 with the previous board, and it changed hands to Highway 80 several years ago, and Aaron and Eric are in the audience. Can y'all just raise your hand? Since the change in the folks that actually run it, there's more rules now, there's more expectations of the people that come there from day to day. And before, back in 2012, 2013, it was more of a place for people to gather, and now it's a place where people actually are gathering, but they have expectations to look for a job, try to get a job. And I've got to give one plug to one deal is Highway 80 Rescue Mission is actually opening up a place called Triumph Village, which is Highway 64 out by the airport. And what this place will be is for guys to go through the recovery program in Longview. Once they graduate from that, over a 10-month period, they'll come back to Tyler, and they will actually live at Triumph Village and get plugged back into the community. So I just say all this just to say I see success with this program, and Aaron, Eric, all the folks at Highway 80, thank you for what you do. With that being said, I'd like to move to approve Z1.
Second. Motion by Warren, a second by Nix. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z2?
This is a request to change the zoning from single-family R1A to single-family attached and detached, R1D, by Grace Community. The applicant is requesting this to, in order to build townhomes. The, to the north is Zone C2 and is undeveloped, and to the south is Light Commercial and PXR, which are the locations of a single-family home and undeveloped property. To the west, you see R1A, which is developed with a single-family home, and to the east is C1, which is developed with a parking lot associated with the church. Our future land use request would be amended to single-family and single-family attached. The property is currently being used as part of the parking lot associated with the church. The applicant proposes to build two attached units on these two green parcels that you see here, on two individual lots on Goliad Street. The R1D zoning serves as an appropriate transition from the C1, so from that parking lot into the single-family neighborhood, and the property is located in our North End revitalization area, and this is a, this request is consistent with our goal to develop infill in the North End. Of the 13 notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition to this request, and the planning and zoning commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
In the, I do have a card from Steve Nix, who is a representative of Grace, and it says just for questions as well. Are there any questions?
Move to approve Z2.
Second. Motion by McGee, a second by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z3?
The applicant is requesting a change from industrial zoning to general commercial in order to develop a daycare facility. The surrounding properties are zoned M1 and are developed with a mixture of warehouse and retail uses, and then you can see in that white area, that's outside of the city limits, and so this is right on the border of our city limits. The future land use map would be amended from light industrial warehouse to general commercial. The applicant is requesting this for a daycare with a pediatric daycare aspect, and specifically, this is for children and young adults who have medical special needs. Of the 13 notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition, and the planning and zoning commission recommends this by a 7-0 vote.
I do have a card here in favor of a Barbie Clark. Would you like to speak, or just want to be here for questions only? Great, okay. Are there any questions?
No questions. Move to approve Z3.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Sellers. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. O1. Let's just pause for just one second, so if any of the zoning applicants want to go ahead and leave, you're welcome to stay for another hour and a half with this. I mean, I, thank y'all. Okay, at this time, Heather, you're doing O1 as well, right?
Yes, sir. This is a request to reappoint members to the tax increment reinvestment zone number one. It was in 1998 that the City of Tyler designated the Tyler Industrial Park as reinvestment zone number one. The board consists of nine members, with members serving staggered two-term, two-year terms. The Board of Directors makes recommendations to the governing body of the municipality that creates the zone, which is City of Tyler, concerning the administration of the project planned for this zone. And you can see here, this is a map that represents the Tyler Industrial Park. The Tyler Economic Development Council has requested that the city council, as administrator for the zone, reappoint members to this board, so it would be the reappointment of Dean Kegel as chair until January of 2020. It's a one-year reappointment for the chair, and then Fred Carl and Billy Hibbs Jr. to be reappointed until January of 2021. And with that, we recommend approval.
Any questions?
Move to approve, approve O1.
Motion from Westbrook. Second. Second from McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. O2?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the next two items on the agenda will be related to the budget. Item O2 is the first item that we'll take. This is an ordinance to amend the budget. It is a request that City Council consider adopting an ordinance amending the FY1819 budget to provide funding to complete various construction projects, purchases, and that were not completed by September 30th, 2018, or 2018. I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights for the general fund. We're looking at amending the budget for $58,055, and that is related to just some street striping and some utility, concrete for utility cut repairs that were not completed by September 30th. Tourism fund, a total of $334,000, approximately there for the tourism fund. A big part of that is Rose Garden improvements that were not completed by year end. And then for transit, UT shuttle service that's being added there. The water utilities operating fund, we've got a total of $335,000 there. $129,000 of that, which is really a new item, is for a maintenance payment to the Upper Nature's River Authority. They had a dam inspection done by TCQ, and they had a little surprise that they needed to do some repairs, so they're passing that on to all of the cities that participate in Lake Palestine. Also, there's various pumps that we need to repair at some of the water plants, and then we'll go to the Water Capital Fund. We're looking at about $675,000 there. $500,000 is for emergency sewer repairs, and $100,000 to half an associate is for some Text dot utility relocates. And then some data tracking software for fog ordinance, about $75,000 there. And then solid waste, extending sewer lines to Lindsay Park, about $91,000 there as well. And then Stormwater Management Fund, a million dollars for some emergency repairs that you were discussed, that was covered with you in previous council meetings. So having said that, that kind of summarizes everything on item O2, so it is recommended that you all approve this ordinance to amend the budget.
Questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Approve O2.
Motion from McGee.
Second.
Second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. O3?
Item O3 is a budget amendment, budget amendment as well for grants. This is related to our CBG Home FAA and Housing Choice voucher program. And for CBG, we are basically requesting that you all amend the budget for about $620,000. Some of that is about $85,000, $86,000 related to demolition, public facilities, which are some curb and gutter projects, about $260,000 there as well. Home, we're looking at some, a total of $537,000 approximately, looking at some reconstruction of $216,000, and some programming con to be used on various projects of about $279,000. Our Housing Choice voucher program, we're looking at amending the budget for $273,000 there as well, for admin costs, full-time salaries, so about $273,000. On our Airport Grant Fund, for Grant 37, 38, 39, we're looking at amending the budget for approximately $2.2 million there. Those are just carryover funds that we didn't spend in last fiscal year, that we've had to spend throughout the first part of this fiscal year, so we need to do a little cleanup and get the budget amended for that as well. So having said that, once again, I recommend that you all approve item O3, which is an ordinance to amend the budget for various grant funds.
Any questions of Kedrick? Broderick, since this is your first year, we generally do this in the first meeting of the year where we have funds left over from the previous year, just to make sure we book it properly, and so we can move forward into this year.
Move to approve O3?
A motion by Warren, a second by?
Second.
By Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M1?
Morning, Mayor and Council. M1 is a request for council to reject proposal for RFP 18-012 for pair transit services. Tyler Transit issued an RFP in May of 2018, and only one proposal was received from MDMJ. And we went through the RFP process after the bid was received in June of 2018, evaluating the proposal. We did run into some stumbling blocks with FTA in regards to the proposal. The aspect FTA, when we did our cost analysis for what the total project was allowed, they weren't in favor of it because it was, it was in a balance of teeter totter one way or the other financially. If it was just a few thousand less or a few thousand more savings or expense, it wasn't validated enough to move forward with the project. They basically asked the question, why would we do it? And the secondary problem, which brought back up a history, even though the vehicles, as far as liquidating the assets that we do own, the aspect of it was, is when we went to FTA, because that, or went to Text dot on that part, they wouldn't make a decision, and they're the major money stake in that as far as our grants are concerned, and they wouldn't make the decision, and they referred us to FTA. And then FTA, we, technically, we've, and as kind as I can say it, there are a lot of emails back and forth that took a long time to get responses, and even what we had to do with, if you remember back in a couple of years ago when we did the full transit bid, I finally had to have a meeting. We went, took Terrence Gorman with legal, and we went to FTA and had a meeting with them, all their legal team, and the, I don't even know his official title, but the leader of Region 6 of FTA, Ogden. And the, they had said that we would be under breach of contract at that time if we were to liquidate all the vehicles, everything that was grant-related, and so they weren't in favor of that. And the one thing that FTA that came back that really made it hard for us to make a decision was part of the bid was a $100,000 in-kind donation. And FTA has the capability of making those decisions of yes, no with us, and there was no, they refused to accept the $100,000 donation, and so we, finally, that, that made the deal far as money to the city savings, because 80% of that would be paid by the in-kind donation, would actually reduce our local match dollar figure in that percentage. And, but because they refused that, it made it even more difficult to, with the cost analysis. So it takes me back to the cost analysis. It just does not make it feasible to happen. The only way that we could take this any further is basically you could table it. Our recommendation is to reject it, and then if we can get anything out of FTA, is we put it back out to bids. We've already extended a little bit of our portion dealing with FTA on this. I'd have to ask staff, but I think it was six months, but we've extended past the six months with dealing with this RFP and, or this bid. And so it, really, the whole aspect of it is, until FTA, no matter what they do in the United States and other locations, Region 6 is refusing to allow us to use the $100,000 in-kind. They're not favorable of the analysis of when we did the cost analysis of how we do business, and they weren't in favor of us liquidating vehicles, especially some that we just purchased within the last year, two years ago. And other than bringing one of the FTA people here, I'm limited to what I could tell you other than that's, I'm hitting a brick wall.
Yeah, but you've made it very clear. So, I mean, you don't need to, you don't need to have somebody from FTA here. We got it.
But if in the past, they've encouraged, if in the past, they've encouraged donation and in-kind contributions, and now they are not, and they're disallowing that $100,000, are the rules of the game changing?
Well, they've never been a good proponent of in-kind donations. When there's some that'll tell you, yes, they will, and then when you get to them, they don't allow it. They've, they have frowned upon the any kind of in-kind donation, but this is what happened last time in the bid, because it was in the, in the, it came as not part of our bid to, as far as transit services. They, we didn't put it in our bid packet to allow any kind of in-kind or that type of operation, so they rejected because when that bid come in on the transit operation, the, they said nobody else had that opportunity, so thus they killed it. And this time, putting it in, is they, they have a flyer in, that's, as far as, go to Washington DC that does talk about in-kind donations, and it is, to me, it's a moving target, because I think we did everything. We put it in the bid proposal to give them free standing of doing anything they can, and then the target moved, and that's, that's the kindest way I can say it.
I mean, you go ahead.
Russ, I'd like to ask, is this, when you talk about the in-kind donation, do you know whether this is statewide or just town? What other cities have received the in-kind donation that you aware of?
I don't have, there's some that have been indicated, but not that I've had a conversation with that's in the United, or in Texas anyways, in Region 6.
Okay.
I'm not saying they're not out there, but I have not, talking to FTA, they don't, they ask, they go with the aspect that this is not acceptable.
And, Bob, you got a question? You go ahead.
I do. So if we reject this proposal, how's that going to impact our pair transit?
There is no impact. They, FTA really looks at, and then, you know, to come in staffing, that we've continued to do a good job. We have had an influx of higher demands with, we do service with MDMJ with an overflow contract. We had a higher amount last year because we did run through a period of time losing bus driver, staff, that type of thing. And so it still shows we're saving money, we're still utilizing local vendor with that, and so it's still, we're just, we're at a break even of, even if our budget, if you, one of the things that, I mean, it's in my deal, it says additional oversight. I don't even look at the oversight as a, at this point, as a check against them, because I can't get past FTA. If I was to turn it over, we would probably have to have oversight, because we do require it now, and we do it in-house, and if we gave up a large portion of our operation, we wouldn't want to have oversight, because if you don't, you will, you will find FTA getting into our pocket later, and that could be costly.
We do have a card on, for Jamal Moheer to come up if he wants to speak, but, look, we have been through this for, I've been around here for 10 years, right? Well, nine years, I guess, right now, but we, several occasions, we have had discussions with FTA. FTA pays the bulk of the money towards all our pair transit and our busing system. We don't play by their rules. They pull all those funds, and they also ask us to pay back previous funds that they granted to us. So there is no logical reason for us to put ourselves in a position to be at odds with FTA. So let's not do that. Jamal?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Jamal.
For the record, my name is Jamal Moheer. I reside at eleven ninety County Road thirty-five oh four. And truth be told, Russ Jackson just told you the truth. So did the mayor.
He does always tell the truth.
So did the mayor.
Russ sometimes goes into much more detail than necessary. He always tells the truth, I will tell you that. And I appreciate that with him, yes.
Listen, but you're right. And truths have been said. The truth really should outrage you. You really should, because it does me, because it does affect my operation. And really, it just costs you a hundred thousand dollars. And and that's just to say the least on the financial side. That money was going to help having those most vulnerable in our community have the same amenity and access to transportation as you do. You like Uber, but, you know, that is not available to those most vulnerable. This technology would have made those most vulnerable have the same access to the technology. Now, you know, in conflicts, most casualties, most severe casualties are caused by friendly fire. And you need to find out why this friendly fire is damaging or hurting our systems and our budgets. Having said that, the rules are not changing at FTA. The rules are published in a circular, in a document, to help us guide our operation. They're not negotiable. They're written, and they're practiced here in our region. We have made contributions to other transit providers and used as local match as of today. Why is City of Tyler denied that option, that tool? There is a tool in your tool chest that they're withholding from you. I can go on, you know, I've been in business here thirty years, doing fine. But why is, why are they disallowing what they're allowing others is not allowed for you to use?
We'll be more than happy to ask that question.
Yeah.
We'll be happy to ask that question through Deborah Pullum, the legal department. We'll ask that question of FTA. But if FTA gives this answer, then you are more than welcome to call the Congressman to work on federal issues that are above our pay grade here. But we will request that answer from FTA.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
You have a higher pay grade than I do. You can call the Congressman.
Be more than happy to reach out and ask that question to the Congressman and to FTA, and then the answer will be the answer. But the recommendation today is to deny or to vote in favor of denying the RFP eighteen dash zero one two. Do I have a motion to do that?
So move.
Have a motion by Moore? Second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. On to M two.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. M two is one we've talked about in recent past. It's a request that you award bid number nineteen dash zero one six for Lindsay Park sewer installation to JDR Contracting LP of Van Texas, an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty thousand dollars, or three hundred and forty thousand twenty-nine dollars. And and also change the dollar amount in the agreement to Huckabee Properties, which is a developer in that area. Original developer was seventy-three thousand, and we went back to negotiate because we weren't going to put any more money into the project, and they came up to a hundred and thirty-three thousand to be their part. So it was just an initial change.
Russ?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a different presentation that you want to be showing to Fund Forest?
Yeah, this one needs to go down. I apologize. I didn't do one for this one. Too many ins for me today. So this one, again, is a taking from the Greenbrier Lift Station all the way to the property, going through the developer property and then cutting across. It's the most advantageous, which we do have Brandon Corporation, if you had questions for them to ask any more whys or in that reason. But it does save quite a bit of money instead of going straight up, and some of the hill advantages of the terrain going straight up the road, it really is a better fit for the property. It takes it all the way to the existing bathroom concession stand there on the soccer side, and then that allows us to get future access. We do have a bathroom that was donated that we'll, we'll start that process once we finalize these things to get that bathroom up and going and get the sewer to that point. There are some additional half-cent funds to get a bathroom on the other side, and then I'll work with the water department in regards to going under Lindsay, and then we'll be able to tie in and save a lot of money of multiple runs and then be on sewer instead of a septic system.
Are you ready for questions?
You go ahead, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is great to move forward, because we have discussed upgrading those restrooms with, at Lindsay Park now for ten years or so, nine or ten years. So this is, this is really important step to get that started and completed. So do, there is a card here from Bob Reed Love at Brandon for questions. Do, does anyone have questions?
Move to approve M two?
A motion by Nick, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
All right. That one, you can have it up now. Thank you. M three is a request for consider authorizing the city managed award, the bid number nineteen dash zero one nine for Fund Forest Park and Wilder Park Renovations to the sole bidder, Garrett and Associates, General Contractors of White House. They will furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, labor, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for Part A, which is Fund Forest, and four hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars for Part B and the alternates of Wilder Park. On December twentieth, we opened up bids, which happens to be the second bid. We did two bids. First bid did not come in, any bids at all. Excuses from the contractors. We had four visible at the bid, and they advised Brandon Corporation that they needed more time, but we didn't have enough time to make a change order to extend. It just was best to run it and see where it went, and nobody came in. We did the same thing, and I think we had about seven this time contractors at the bidding, pre-bid proposal. And this time, we still only received one bid. I'll let them, Mr. Brandon is with us to maybe explain a little more detail on the, what the reasons might be. Some of it would be the timeframe, some of it was the size. We had one bidder that came back and just said, it's too big of an operation for what I have time for, people for, and that across. The, the way it's broke down, I'll kind of give you an update. Fund Forest Park, the original, look at lay of the land and go to their proposal. The shaded area to the left was the, as a reminder, was the splash pad and the food court, then trucks would be able to come through and be accessed to that. And the main building would have ADA. All the ramps had to be redone for ADA. Well, the bids came in extremely high for installation, which, when we went through this process, you know, even through the design features and the other companies that installed the splash pads and the type of equipment, you know, we, we only have so much money to do this project. Is this feasible? And that was the understanding we had, that this would be feasible to be done with funds that were available. And as it turned out, the splash pad alone install came in at a little over a million dollars. The slide came in almost four hundred and, I got those numbers ahead of us in just a second, but over four hundred thousand dollars. And so we do not have the funds. And so we, in order not to kill the bid as a whole, we decided, because the way we did this is we did line item bidding, and I expressed that, so that if there's anything that would come in, we wouldn't have the problem we had, such as what Hillside was a problem. We way overbid, we had no line item capability, and thus we had to start all over several times. And so this process allowed me to eliminate line items in this case. That's where we did it.
Okay, tell me what we're getting.
And what we're getting is the bathroom remodel, which means when the ADA came in, they said we had to have X number of facilities and bathroom facility, and this brings this up to code. There's a ramping that needs to be redone at the, if you look at the south end of this picture, at the bottom of the picture, there's a ramp coming out of the building that has to be redone. Wilder, the splash pad to the right corner of your picture there is being eliminated. That is the splash pad sidewalk and some additional tight parking for ADA. That, again, came in way over, and so we eliminated that. The, everything else that we've talked about in the past, the parking, the sidewalk coming from Wilder all the way to the basketball court, the pavilion over the basketball court, and some of the additional concrete and pavilion to the building to help with some things that we do during the summertime for the children, cookout, the things we do in that regard. So this, this whole process just really eliminate anything to do with the splash pad. We actually are going to allow them to do the demo that came in at about sixteen thousand dollars. And so just to go ahead and clean that side up of there, the old pool building, and to get it looking nice in that area. These are the, again, the dollar figures for Fund Forest Part A, total of four hundred and ninety-one thousand eight fifty, just to keep moving with the project. And again, Part B with the alternates, the pavilion, one hundred and sixty-two, we actually guesstimated, estimated a hundred and fifty, so we felt comfortable with moving on with these projects. Every one of them that's in here, that besides the splash pad repair, were really very comparable to work that's been done with the city, and Garrett has worked with us before. The pool splash pads, everything just was way out of the ballpark. And and so that's why we deleted those items. If I went with the total bid packet, including the splash pad, which I have stopped, we stopped, we never did, was able in time to stop the purchase of the splash pad, if this is the case, if we're going to be dealing with a million dollars, I did stop that purchase until we get this reevaluated, which is what, what we will be doing through Brandon and the contractors, looking at actual, going through the process of looking at change order. Is there a change order that we can do? And I know Mr. Brandon can explain all that if y'all would like to listen to that part.
Yeah, Terry, would you like to come up? It's been, it's been a few years since you made a presentation to us, so.
I'm Terry Brandon, for the record.
Terry, when were you city engineer?
Seventy-three to seventy-seven.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. That's right.
Long time ago.
I remember.
Gentlemen and Ms. Sellers, the, oh, sorry, and Ms. Pullum. The, what he's talking about there on the splash pads is we work with splash pads and aquatics all over the United States. In fact, we have projects overseas, military bases and things like that. We got one bid from one Dallas subcontractor who did splash pad, and he bid a million dollars for the installation of feature that the city was already going to purchase. In other words, just the installation.
Right.
Which was about, in our opinion, at least twice too high, maybe three times more than it should have been. We met with Mr. Garrett for Garrett Construction, and he's going to talk with some other suppliers that we, we know. We put him in contact with two others already, and he's in negotiation with them to see what kind of prices they might come to an agreement on. And if they got, if they reduce the price from a million dollars to, say, three hundred thousand or something like that, now we're back in the money. We're back, we're okay. But, and at that point, they could come back to the Council for a change order, number two, to add that back in, or we can put it back on the streets and bid that separately, if that's what Council decides to do. So it gives us some leverage. We, before we can do anything at Fund Forest, we have to do the ADA.
Right.
Absolutely have to. The buildings were built, if some of you have been around here a while, that was built in the thirties, and that building does not comply with ADA in any shape, form, or fashion. The restrooms don't comply, access to the building doesn't comply, access to the pool doesn't comply, the parking spaces don't comply. There's just a lot of ADA issues out there. Going forward with this reduced contract that Russ has just presented to you, would allow us to get those ADA issues off the table right now, get them taken care of, and then give us another month or so to work out the details on the splash pads, and then present that back to you and see whether or not you want to move forward with Garrett doing that work with a subcontractor, or whether you choose to put that back out on the streets and we rebid that separately. So that's kind of where we are. We would, we would recommend this change order to you as your consultants, and so we can move on forward with the project, not delay it any longer.
In? Yes, please.
What is the actual cost for the splash pad at the Wilder Park?
I got, I got mine if you don't want to. The splash pad, while I was looking for that, the splash pad at Wilder Park was basically, it's the type of splash pad, it doesn't have a lot of structure up above the ground. It has fountains that are embedded in the concrete, so they can't be vandalized or stolen or anything like that.
If you redo the old pool, right?
Yeah, it, no, sir, this would be, this would be bigger, and it would be over, it would be as big as this council chamber, and it would be over to the southeast corner of the glass center, okay? And it'd be up on that little hill. There's a little clearing there above the pavilion, and it would be in that grassy area there.
Russ, could you pull that plat back up where it's going to be?
I basically know what you're talking about.
Oh, do you? Okay.
I guess my concern and question would be, since you're the engineer, what would be the difference in savings if we would try to do the splash pad based on the old swimming pool facility where the pool is located right now? Wilder Park, I'm sorry, Wilder Park. We do have a pool at Wilder Park that's been closed for two years.
Well, there'd be no savings at all. The, we still have to do demolition of the pool. Whether we put the splash pad at the location shown on the map there in the lower right-hand corner, or whether we put the splash pad up by the old present pool, it's probably immaterial as far as the cost. It's not going to save any money, but it probably wouldn't cost us any more money. Planning on doing the demolition anyway, the demolition of the present bathhouse, pool, and splash pad, I think that that has to happen anyway, no matter what you do there. So did you find the number?
The millions, what you're talking about, the Wilder?
Wilder. Just four or something. Okay, the, just the splash pad. Now, this one did include the contractor providing the piping and the nozzles that go in the deck and a controller, so that these didn't all run at the same time, and it involved the concrete deck and the fencing around, and that three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Now, that was, again, we think that that's roughly at least a third, maybe a half, too much for that splash pad. Now, we're not, we still think that splash pad needs to be built, and that's a great place for it, right there by the entrance to the park, and it'd be a beautiful thing, but I think this is not the right price.
You think it should be less? You're saying?
I think it'd be, I think it'd be closer to two hundred thousand dollars is where it needs to be.
And you're working with Garrett on that as well?
Yes, sir. I met with Garrett after the bid and said, where's the money? I said, show me where the money is, because the bids were, we felt like the total bids were too high.
Right.
When we looked at the individual line items, it was the splash pad items that were too high. Everything else, the buildings, this concrete work, the flat work, the ADA work seemed to be reasonable. But the splash pad work was just unreasonable with, and we asked him why, and he said, well, I only had one quotation from one bidder.
So, so the process that you're recommending is that we go ahead and do the ADA work that absolutely has to be done?
Yes, sir.
And the upgrades to the buildings. And then in the meantime, once we approve those, if we approve those today, then you're saying that you plan to go back and begin immediately, and you already have really started working on repricing both splash pads?
Yes, sir. Garrett is already pricing with these alternative bidders. He's already looking at those numbers. I believe we can come back to you at your meeting in February.
Okay.
With an option for you and show you the amounts on both of the splash.
It's not that we're not doing splash pads, then that you're working on the good repricing for, on our behalf, you're working on that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Exactly.
Makes sense?
Makes sense, a little disappointing, but I understand, I understand finances also. But appreciate the work that you guys are doing with that.
We'll continue to stay on it.
And just keep in mind, and for my own sake, that there's water at Fun Forest, there's no water for kids playing at Wilder Park.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Thank you.
So that, when the councilman just said that, that would ask, have me ask one other question or make one other statement, then price both, but let's really work on the price of Wildert and then that might be, if we have an either or situation, Wildert would be the first selection.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Be great.
Okay. With that said, do you want to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to accept M3.
Second.
Second, a motion by Moore, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, I shuffled my paperwork for M4.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
This will be the last one, I hope quicker for you too.
I'm going to make sure it is.
M4 is strictly accepting the bids for Swan Electric Service to furnish all necessary materials and equipment, superintendent's labor and the amount not to exceed $29,911. Only bid received out of about seven bids and the, this is do demo work of old existing poles. Wilder Park has some poles that are in the playing field area that are, I'm probably guessing forty years or better, just to get them out of the way at this point so we can do our dirt work we need to do. Fun Forest, part of this is to eliminate one pole, we're still going to utilize the keep lighting in the area that we're redoing to have a soccer field, so we just got to move one pole. And then there's one of the old fields that we're doing that we're just removing because it has not been used in the last several years and just for maintenance purposes, we're just going to remove the existing playing field so that we don't have any maintenance cost of having to fix it up one time a year or none. And so it's really a cost savings in the end.
Russ, I, thank you very much and I know you're very conscientious and you're doing a great job and so I do appreciate it, but I'll entertain a motion to approve M4.
Some votes.
Motion by Nick, a second by Sellers? Yeah, thanks for saying that. All in favor? All in favor, opposed, the ayes have it. Linda made the second.
Kinda, sorta.
I'm sorry, she said it faster than I could read on my little pad here. Hello, Mr. Taylor, M5.
Good morning. The first item before you is M5 and I'll be here for the next four items also, so. This is requesting the city council authorizing city manager to execute a contract, engineering services contract with Half &amp; Associates for $147,625 for the 2019 Water Main Improvements Project and then also there's a resolution to allow us to reimburse ourselves with proceeds of future debt. What this design project is, it goes with the enhancement asphalt and seal coat programs. We started this program last year where we go in those areas that we are looking at doing either seal coat or the overlay and identify water lines that need to be replaced or aged or the two inch lines, the smaller lines, and that's what this project is. We've identified the streets, engineering working closely with Tyler Water Utilities identified the areas that need these water lines replaced and this will be bid with the overlay project, we include that, so the contractor controls his own destiny on those, but that's what this will be the start of this, is the engineering design for that. We will come back later in the year and give you an overview of the entire seal coat and overlay program because not all the streets on this will require utility work.
Any questions of Mr. Taylor?
No, it's a good thing, we, more we can consider what's under the road before we spend the money on the overlay, the better.
Correct.
Move to approve M5.
Motion by Nick.
Second.
Second by Westbrook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. M6?
Mayor Council, this is a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the not to exceed amount of $486,000 with Half &amp; Associates in conjunction with C.T. Brandon Corporation for the preliminary engineering water system inventory and approve a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with the proceeds of future debt. As part of our capital projects, we show two more booster pump stations and then possibly some other improvements to the system to increase pressure. One of the items that I wanted to consider in discussing this with staff was to come back and to make sure that we identify correctly where those booster stations may need to be or where is the best location. TCQ has also mentioned to us in the past that we may, we have a deficit in elevated storage, but it's not significant enough yet to cause us to have to do something, so we want to look at all alternatives. So what staff, my discussion with them, we have decided to go forward with doing a water system inventory as part of the preliminary engineering for those future projects. In doing this, we'll get immediately two benefits. First of all, we will be able to identify the type of material and the age of the pipe because this will be off of record drawings and so that will also help us in the future if or when we get into a water line replacement program as we start looking at some of the older water lines. We know we have issues with older sewer lines, you know, the water lines have finite age also and considering the Tyler Water Utilities has been in business since 1916, you know, there may be, I don't think there's any of those pipes still in the ground, but there might be and we need to look at that. The second thing going forward from that would be to improve the accuracy of our water maps and right now we are aware that our GIS layer for the water system is not as accurate as it, we would like it to be, so we will also be doing that at the same time. And then that will lead to another step, which we have discussed previously as part of the recommendation from the, from Hibbs and Todd and Improtech on the water issue that we had in 2017, the summer of 2017. They recommended that we improve or upgrade our water distribution model and so with this data collected, then we can do the water distribution model, then will allow us to perform engineering and also in the future, when we have water quality issues, we can actually use the model to determine what's going on by that data. So that's, that's, this is the first step. The, the good part of this is that as part of the comprehensive stormwater master plan that Half and Brandon are working on right now, they have scanned a lot of sheets for the drainage, which happened to include water lines and the sewer lines. And so we've got some data, things start processing, there'll be more data collected because again, they were not searching strictly for every subdivision, they were just looking at the ones that might have drainage. So by doing that process, we will, you know, we begin to have identifiable data that they can process and then include that in our GIS layer.
Scott, thanks for the great leadership and what you, and everything else you bring to your team and, you know, when you've got the right tools, it's easy to develop a plan and to work that plan. So with that, I move to approve M6.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by Warren. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. M7?
Mayor Council, this is a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract in the amount of $233,874.40 to Reynolds &amp; Kay for the utility relocations at the Azalea and Camellia street bridges on Sunnybrook Drive. As y'all are aware, we are, Tech dot is replacing two of those structures, those at Azalea and Camellia, the city is doing the other one. To, prior to Tech Stop bidding these two, they do require that any utilities that are in the way need to be relocated and that is what this construction contract will do at both of those intersections. We're also very thankful we got the same, you know, we've got one contractor so they can do a much better job of controlling traffic. As we all know, Sunnybrook does get busy at several times during the day and so they'll be able to deal with that traffic and we will not do both of those bridges simultaneously. They will be done in some sequence that the contractor will determine, but we will not be closing a chunk of Sunnybrook or a whole lane of Sunnybrook at any one time. There will be some local in the area they're working, but anyway, we're recommending authorizing award of this construction contract.
So what all utilities are being?
It's water and sewer lines, it's city utilities, so there's a water, I think there's water line and sewer line on both of these. In fact, I think our sewer line is really, part of it may be actually under part of the existing bridge structure, so.
It is. So do I have a motion to approve? Any questions?
Move to approve, M7.
Second.
A motion by Warren, a second by councilman Sellers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mayor Council, this is a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $43,000 with Elledge Engineering Corporation for the community development block grant sidewalk project near Austin Elementary. This project will improve pedestrian traffic in that area and considering it's adjacent to a school makes it a much better type of project as give children that may walk to that school, the walking on a sidewalk and live along the street. The sidewalks covered by this, go back to my notes right here, is on the west side of Palace from Queen to Franklin and then on the south side of Franklin from Palace to Moore and then on the west side of Moore from Cochrane to Franklin and there was a map attached with this, so we're recommending awarding this engineering services contract to Elledge.
May I, may I?
You sure?
Thank you for this. This has been a project that I've been looking at for past four or five years, dear to my heart and I want to say this publicly, that I know I have been a thorn in Prentice and Renisha's side since they started this project and she's worked with me and her department pretty good on this. This is a project where we have young people, kiddos, three and four-year-old walking in the streets, coming back and forth from school and I think it's something we needed a long, long time ago and I certainly appreciate working with everybody involved with this to get this project going. This is a project that I want to see through regardless of when I'm sitting in this seat or not. This is dear to my heart and I appreciate you guys speeding the process up, so hopefully by the end of the new school year, those kiddos will have sidewalks to walk on, on Moore and Palace Street. So thank you very much and I'll make a motion to accept M8.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
A second by McGee. I do have one clarification, I want to make sure that the engineering group has one meeting with the class at Austin, they might not even
Oh, yeah.
Be there anymore because, but years ago, I was invited to a classroom where they made this proposal to the mayor about adding these streets as well.
The Hibbs district.
And so if that class is still in existence, I would like the engineering firm to reach out to Austin Elementary School and go meet with the class.
We will do that.
About that.
And I agree, Mr. Mayor.
I think that would be a wonderful learning experience, especially for those kids and some of the teachers that reached out to us years ago. I think it'd be great.
And for informational purposes, I was there and I think the four-year-old class gave us a letter stating, please give us some sidewalks.
Yeah, they did, so it was great.
And was very emotional.
We will make sure that happens and go tell them that there's a project.
I'll vote in favor of it as long as they'll agree to meet with one of the classes.
Right.
We will do that.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Can you drink your bag?
Yes, sir. I don't have M9. M9. Mayor Council, you have item M9 in front of you. This is our quarterly financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2018, so this is the end of our fiscal year, last fiscal year. And the item that you have, the detail in your packet, it represents about 70% of the appropriations for the 1718 budget. The other 30% are special revenue funds, internal service funds and capital project funds. The report that you have, this report compares actual revenues to date with revenues as the same period last year and actual expenditures to date with incremental budget appropriations. Budgeted revenues and expenditure amounts for the fiscal year can also be compared to current projection amounts. And so I'll just hit some of the highlights. We've got the general fund, revenues from all sources are projected to be about 1.3 million greater than budget, large part of that is due to sales tax. And general fund expenditures from the fiscal year are projected to be about 1.7 million below budget, a large part of that is just due to salary savings. Water utilities revenues are projected to be about 785,000 greater than budget and expenditures are projected to be about 2.9 million less than budget and that is largely due to salary savings, also savings in utilities and some constructions in, out at Lake Tyler and Hydrilla Treatment that, yes, sir.
But some of that was transferred.
Yes, some of that is transferred.
We just referred it earlier in the meeting to transfer to other projects this year.
Mm-hmm. For the, this community. Yes, if you, if you go back to the budget amendment, we will be using a portion of this.
Right, I think.
These savings for the
About 1.6, 1.7 million.
Emergency sewer repairs.
Yeah, right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got you. Also, we've had savings in the services account as well. If we go down to the solid waste department, the revenues are projected to be about 406,000 greater than budget, expenditures are about 375,000 more than budget. Airport fund, revenues are projected to be less than budget by about $171,000 and expenditures are projected to be less than budget by about 239,000. Development services, we had a strong year in development services, revenues are projected to be about 625,000 greater than budget and expenditures are about 85,000 less than budget. Hotel motel fund remains relatively flat. Also, just, we don't have a summary here in the packet, but just to touch on the health fund a little bit, we had a great year in the health fund. Claims came in less than expected.
Can you give us an idea what that was?
Yes, we, on the, on the health fund, we came in about 2.1 million less than budget on expenditures. Like I said,
Thank you.
Large part of that is, is due to health claims and great work of you all in conjunction with our HR department. This is, this is a great thing. Also, health claims are kind of like sales tax, it's up and down, you never know what it's really going to do, but we'll take it when we can get it. Also, on the, on the revenue side, we, we got additional revenues from RX rebates and the performance penalty, that was quite a bit of dollars there and that was due to the hard work of everyone as well. So, so I'm very pleased with the way we ended on the health fund. We're building a nice fund balance there to be able to absorb any challenges that we may see in the future and if we just continue to work on that fund, I think.
So no funds were transferred from that fund?
I'm sorry?
No funds were transferred from that fund?
We didn't, we didn't transfer any funds from other funds to this fund, that's correct.
Or from that fund?
That's correct, yes, ma'am. Having said that, that kind of wraps up everything as far as, of course, we have a lot more funds than this, but these are kind of the major funds that we track and report to you all. So it's recommended the city council review and accept the revenue expenditure report for quarter ending September 30th, 2018.
Some votes. Some moves.
A motion by Nick.
Second.
Second by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. At this time, we're to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled, or can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Sellers. Second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, we've been working on our runway 422 ribbon cutting event that's for next, next Thursday, January 17th at 2:00 PM. We hope all of the council can attend. We have, um, it'll be an exciting event for us, as we are excited to celebrate this important milestone for Tyler and East Texas transportation. The 2018 seal coat and, uh, project is complete, and traffic striping is now underway. The 2018 asphalt overlay is still underway, and those projects are estimated to complete in April of 2019. Cambridge Road Improvement Design is underway. Uh, traffic counts are completed, surveying is completed, and the conceptual analysis is being done to identify right-of-way needs. We anticipate that we will be bidding this project in September. The communications team, uh, worked with streets, police, and fire, uh, during the past couple of weeks on our city communications during ICE event. As we typically see in January and February, uh, is when we'll have usually ICE events here in the Tyler area, and we've been able to kind of make sure to, know how to be able to communicate with our media partners and through social media on where we are seeing different ICE, uh, issues and being able to get that out. We also identified which priority areas we would work on, uh, to keep open using our new sanding methods. Uh, this will be rather limited, and we'll emphasize that we cannot keep streets outside of our emergency areas open during major freeze events. Uh, Kedrick, uh, was mentioning earlier during the budget, just some of the healthy numbers, but we also just today received our numbers on sales tax. We saw a 6.3% increase, uh, for this month on our sales tax as compared to the previous year. So the numbers on sales tax revenues continue to see, uh, good trends upwards. And also, finally, I want to be able to, uh, compliment our United Way Campaign Committee that we put together. And Davis Dixon might be here, since we had an airport item, or he might be gone. Um, but Davis has been traditionally led that and this year put together, uh, an employee team to assist on our United Way campaign, uh, for our Smith County United Way work that we do. Uh, the results came in this year, and they raised $27,045, uh, from city employees and with their payroll deductions and other just donations that they've done. Uh, and this is about $11,000 more than the previous year. So this is, was very exciting of what our employees are willing to give out of their heart in order to be able to help those in our community have a better, uh, quality of life. And finally, we have our Half-Cent Summary Report, uh, for your distribution and usage. So if you have any questions on different projects, please let us know.
And I also saw in a, an email that the Golden River Water Treatment Plan is, uh, going to, uh, all the repairs that we've been doing the last several years will be up and functional, uh, in the month of January. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's correct. Good news. Uh, with that said, we do not have any executive session item listed, so I will enter.
Mayor, before you entertain a motion to adjourn, just simply wanted to make a comment. Uh, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I just wanted to thank Jimmy and his team for everything they do and, and, uh, as, as they keep us all safe in the community. We certainly all appreciate our first responders, but, but this is your special day. Thank you, Jimmy. Now, Ms. Mayor.